We're on the air?
We are on the air.
Ms. Little.
I did not prepare that, I'm sorry. Oh, would you? Go ahead. All right, if you guys are ready, we can go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance to start our meeting.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a-
Is it starting in open or closed?
We're starting in open and we'll make questions to go into direct conversation. All right, we're beginning our special meeting, May 2nd, 2022. We have five councilors present. I also want to point out that our town attorney, Matt Harris-Evich, has joined us this evening. I will take a motion to go into executive session subject to 405-6E Consultative Attorney.
Ben Sherrill, move pursuant to one MRSA Section 40560 Consultative Attorney. We're going to executive session.
Thank you, now the second.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor going to executive session say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Non-opposed, motion passed as per here. For anyone on the recording, since we don't have any public here yet, we will be just going down the hall for an executive session until 6:30, which we will come back to down to chambers and begin the rest of our meeting.
Are we moving down the hall?
Yeah.
So, we turning that off?
No, we're gonna leave this on the whole time because we're going down the hall. Okay, mute. No, no, we're keeping it on.
The only thing I have a question, can someone show up in the previous conversation?
Okay, we can mute it.
I just-
Since we're in executive session.
I think we should.
Yeah, okay.
Move to run the executive session.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We are now out of executive session and back in public session. Um, first, I would like to kick us off and formally ask Mr. Go if you would like this matter to be in public session.
Yes, I would.
Yes. Mr. Go for the record states that he would like for this hearing to be conducted in public session. So we will not be going into executive session at this point and will be continuing forward. I have a, an opening statement to kind of get a start and set some ground rules for how this is going to go. So bear with me. It's a little long. The council, this council meeting is scheduled to consider concerns about the conduct of the planning board member Manley Gove and possibly removing him from the planning board. Mr. Gove is here tonight and is represented by legal counsel. Matters of this nature are normally held in executive session pursuant to main statute one MRS section four oh five dash six dash A. However, Mr. Gove, as he just indicated, as is right under statute, has opted to waive the executive session and have this meeting held in public session. Procedurally, on January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the council notified Mr. Gove in writing that we intended to investigate concerns about Mr. Gove's conduct as a planning board member. A subcommittee of the council was thereafter appointed to conduct the investigation. During that investigation, Mr. Gove met with the subcommittee and was afforded a full opportunity to provide information and respond to their questions. The subcommittee thereafter provided a report to the full council and Mr. Gove was provided a copy of that report. On February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the council notified Mr. Gove in writing that, based on our initial review, we were contemplating removing him from his appointed position on the planning board. In that same letter, the council provided Mr. Gove with its concerns. Mr. Gove subsequently indicated that he was not available for our originally scheduled meeting date. Working with his counsel, we scheduled the date of April fourth, which was then scheduled to make tonight, May, May second, twenty twenty-two. Tonight's meeting is not a trial, rather it is a meeting held pursuant to main statute thirty dash A MRS section twenty-six zero one, during which Mr. Gove will be given the opportunity to reply to the council's concerns about his conduct as the council's appointee. Again, this is not a trial. There will not be any witnesses and there will be no cross-examination. For agreeing with us at council, any documentary support Mr. Gove may have has been submitted to the council prior to this meeting and has been reviewed. No additional documentation will be considered or received this evening. Although this meeting is being held in public session at Mr. Gove's request, it will be conducted in the same manner as if the council were still in executive session. The public in attendance is requested to remain polite, respectful, courteous, and quiet. There will be no public comment, participation, or testimony. Any interruptions or interference with this meeting will not be tolerated. Thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Any person who violates these rules of conduct will be asked to leave the room. This meeting is scheduled for one hour, which the council believes is sufficient to, sufficient time to address the issues. The time will be apportioned as such, thirty minutes to hear from Mr. Gove and to ask questions, and thirty minutes for the council to deliberate in executive session. Afterwards, the council may make motions in public session. These timeframes may be adjusted if the council feels it is necessary to do so, but the council will endeavor to stay within the one-hour timeframe. During this meeting, if any issue, issue is raised that requires the council to consult with the town attorney to get legal guidance, we might take a brief executive session, obtain such guidance. In such an event, a motion will be made and the council will leave the room. The executive session law regarding personnel matters is designed to protect the confidentiality and privacy of town employees, appointees, and officials. As noted, those protections apply to Mr. Gove and he has indicated that he waives those protections by seeking to have this meeting in public session. Doing so, however, does not act or operate to waive the protections afforded to and enjoyed by other town employees, appointees, or officials under the executive session law. Mr. Goven and counsel have been notified that if during this meeting they make any complaints or charges against any other town employee, appointee, or official, those persons also have rights under the executive session law that will be respected. The council will do so by either directing Mr. Gove to cease and to move on or by immediately stopping this meeting to go into executive session in order to protect the rights of those other individuals. Any such complaints or charges against others will be considered by the town in the proper forum and at the proper time with prior notification to and protections for the affected individual, just as Mr. Gove has received. Mr. Goven and counsel have been advised of this in advance of this meeting and we fully expect that they will respect this notification. There are several other preliminary matters that need to be addressed before we get started. First, prior to this meeting, Mr. Gove raised an objection about the ability of this council to remove him from the position the council appointed him to. We note that this objection came from Mr. Gove directly and not from his attorney. The council has obtained legal advice regarding this objection and have been advised that the council is within its legal rights to remove Mr. Gove if the facts and circumstance warrant such a removal. We deny the objection. The council is authorized under main statute thirty dash A MRS section twenty-six zero one to remove appointed officials for cause after notice and hearing. Mr. Gove is an appointed town official. He has received written notice and tonight we need to discuss his possible removal. This meeting is legal and authorized by state law and town policy. Further, prior to this meeting, Mr. Gove raised an objection about the legal ability of this council to conduct, conduct its meetings by Zoom. We know that this objection came from Mr. Gove directly and not from his attorney. The council has obtained legal advice regarding its ability to conduct remote meetings via Zoom and have been advised that the council is within its legal rights to do so. We deny the objection. Further, prior to this meeting, Mr. Gove communicated with the council and alleged that this council has already made up its mind regarding his removal. We know that this objection came from Mr. Gove directly and not from his counsel. This allegation is false. There has been no predetermination by the council. Finally, prior to this meeting, Mr. Gove asked that I, as chairperson and councillor Menahan, each recuse ourselves from taking part in this meeting. I will first address Mr. Gove's requests as it pertains to me and then ask councillor Menahan to address that request as it pertains to him. Um, we will then ask that the council make a decision as set forth in our town's code of ethics.
I'll interject at this point and call the council. Does the, do the council members believe that they can hear this matter fairly and without bias? And start with this end?
Yes, fair and unbiased.
There, no conflict. Um, yes, sir, no conflict. Um, Jeff?
Yes, I, I can hear it.
And me as well. Yep. Yes.
You, since the allegations are that you've been asked specifically to refuse and stop to us to address those individually?
Yes, I would like to. Mr. Gove has asked that I recuse myself from this meeting because, in his words, he has allegedly started an investigation with the attorney general's office regarding whether or not Zoom meetings have been done in a legal manner. Mr. Gove states that he has specifically named me in this alleged investigation because I helped run the town Zoom meetings and therefore I must recuse myself. In fact, the town has received written correspondence from the attorney general's office's chief of investigations in which he states that there is not and has not ever been an investigation of me or the town, which in regards to the town Zoom policies. And on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the attorney general's chief of investigations corresponded directly with Mr. Gove and told him that there was no such investigation. Finally, the town's remote meetings policy recently underwent a legal review prompted by a request by Mr. Gove. The policy was determined to be compliant with main law. Mr. Gove's concerns about the town Zoom meetings are without merit. I believe I can hear this matter impartially and fairly and I, and render a decision based solely on the facts and information presented in accordance with the law. I have considered Mr. Gove's allegations and I will not voluntarily recuse myself, but I do ask the council to consider this and making a decision.
And I'll address it as well. Mr. Gove has asked that I recuse myself from this meeting because, in his words, he is allegedly working with an attorney for the purpose of suing me for alleged defamation of character. I have never defamed Mr. Gove and I am unaware of any lawsuit against me initiated by him or by anyone on his behalf. I have not been served with a complaint and to my knowledge, nothing has been filed against me in any court, nor is there any good reason or basis for such a claim to be filed. I believe I can hear this matter impartially and fairly and that I can render a decision based solely on the facts and information presented and in accordance with the law. I have considered Mr. Gove's allegations and will not voluntarily recuse myself. And I ask the council to consider this and making a decision.
And Chair, a document motion.
Please.
The South River Town Council finds that there are no conflicts of interest or bias present to prevent any member or body as a whole from clearly hearing this, this case.
I think, Jack, we need a motion for one, for each individual.
I believe so.
The one for me and one for Jack.
Oh, I, well, speaking of council, okay. I would, I would move that the town council finds that Mallory Cook, chairperson, does not have a conflict of interest or bias to give this case. Second.
I'll let you conduct the vote, Jack, since I'm going to be recusing myself in this particular vote.
Okay, is there any discussion on, on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of, of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mallory, recused.
Recused, yeah.
Okay, so the tally of the vote is four zero for the motion with one extension. And so, on, on Mr. Menahan's behalf, the South River Town Council finds that Jeff Menahan doesn't have a conflict of interest or bias that will unfairly prevent him from hearing this case. Second. Any discussion on the motion? I guess you should know that.
Yeah, I guess, sorry. No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Refused?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one refusal. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us for all of that. Mr. Gove and attorney writing, the floor is yours.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just have a question. Both of you said that, that the council should consider Mr. Gove's request that you accuse yourselves in making a decision in this case. And can you, can you tell me what you mean by that?
I can speak to that.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Be mad, by the way.
I'm Matt Jerris of the Tribune.
Steve Boy. Yeah.
What it speaks to is, I believe the motion for recusal was for the, the two members to not participate in this meeting in any fashion, to step down and to not vote or make it be a decision maker in this case. I believe that's what was being sought and that is what was just addressed.
Okay, I understood. Second question is, the, the time, Mr. Gove was under the impression that he would have an hour to speak. I think I heard you say that in your initial comments that he would have a half an hour and you all would talk.
I'll address that as well. Steve, you and I in conversations and emails, I made clear to you with that half hour. If you're reviewing emails, that was sent to you.
And the, the next question I've got is, I'm not sure what the issues are in this case. In the last week or two, we've had emails going back and forth saying, well, we're going to add this issue to the case and we're going to talk about this as well. Issues like, you know, did Mr. Gove make a complaint to the attorney general's office? Things like that. And it's our opinion that those matters need to be investigated like this matter has been. And if you want to pursue those matters against him, that that should be done at a different time. I think we're here on the matter that was initiated three months ago and that's what we're prepared to address. We're not really prepared to address the rest.
Can I speak to that as well?
Sure.
The issues of this matter were sent to Mr. Gove by letter dated February twenty-fourth of this year. You have a copy of that letter, so you're aware of those issues. The most more recent issue regarding the attorney general's office, we discussed that last week. It's germane to this meeting because Mr. Gove raised it in an attempt to have councillor Cook removed from this meeting. They, both sides have presented information to the council regarding that. You have copies of those as well. So, you know, I believe you have noticed. Those are the issues. The issue set forth in the February twenty-fourth letter and the issue was raised last week regarding Mr. Gove's allegations that he started an investigation with the AG's office. You have noticed that documentation was provided to you and the council. And so there, those are the issues in front of the council tonight. If I understand what you're saying, if I can speak to the council, you're asking that, that's the council, that not have been tabled and investigated at a separate time? Is that what you're asking the council to do?
Correct. I don't, I don't think it's right at this point. I don't think the investigation has been gone through by, by the council. And frankly, we're not sure what you have in front of you. Mr. Gove sent these emails and texts to me and I believe to you all too, and just to make sure that you've got them all, I'd like to present these to you.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're not taking any of this.
Every, I can, I can see you can tell every email you've sent regarding this issue of the attorney general's matter has been presented to the council. I have all of them. They have the correspondence, they have Mr. Throbe's documents, they have the documents from the attorney general's office. They have all of it. If you want to present it to me, as, as, as you were, you were informed before, well before this meeting, no more documentation will be presented tonight.
Well, I, I believe Mr. Gove sent all those. I, he's done a lot of things independently of me and I just want to make sure that you have received those and, and you're not just considering things that I have forwarded to you all because I haven't forwarded to half of what I know he's forwarded to you.
And Chair?
Yeah.
Perhaps at this point, for clarity, the council concerns that are expressed in the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two letter might, might help clarify if we simply read those aloud, what our concerns are.
Yeah, I think Matt sort of already addressed this in his response, but the reason why we're here today is to address the concerns from the council regarding Mr. Gove's interactions with and towards fellow appointed board member, board members, staff, consultants, interactions with staff outside of board meeting, apparent disruptive and disrespectful behavior as an appointed volunteer representative of the town in addition to the request that I recuse myself from dealing with these concerns due to an alleged investigation that does not exist.
I'm sorry, is that in the February letter?
We sent a letter a couple of weeks ago addressing that particular matter and I think it does relate to this because the request is that I recuse myself from this process due to that alleged investigation.
Correct. I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make it clear that that, that wasn't in the February letter.
You're, you're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just raise one more point to the council? My correspondence with attorney writing, I asked him specifically about two weeks ago to provide us all information from Mr. Gove regarding the issue of the attorney general matter and his allegations regarding an investigation and he did not respond to that. He did not provide me with any information. The day after I then sent him a letter saying this was an issue now before the council, Mr. Gove provided information. That information has been provided to all of you in your packet. He has now presented me with more information than Mr. Gove. It appears to be a series of emails back and forth with the problems puzzlement of the Freedom of Access Coalition in the attorney general's office. This information is not provided to the council at the time of the matter and so I would, I would suggest you not consider it. This, I will just note that attorney writing was well aware of what he was being asked to do through Mr. Gove and did not provide the information.
Can I say that I, I would just object to that issue going forward because that issue has not proceeded under the normal guidelines of how this board is to function. You're supposed to be doing an investigation, then you, you question people, you give Mr. Gove a chance to say his piece. And that's, that has not been done here. You're, you're bootstrapping that issue in with this one. And I think you should go forward with this issue, which has been fully investigated, fully documented. And, and now you're saying that, you know, you, you had two weeks to present documents and now it's too late. That's not the way an investigation is supposed to go forward.
Could I just speak for the council, ask a question? Why was this information not provided before tonight? And you had ample notice that you, in several requests to provide new information?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mr. Gove says he wasn't aware that you had talked to Brian McMaster. And got a letter saying that there was no such information. After he got that letter saying there was no information, he said, well, yes, there is. And he went and got it.
So let me, let me just make clear. The question to the Attorney General's office was whether or not there was an investigation by the Attorney General's office. That is specifically a meeting. There's a chief of investigations via Attorney General's office. And the question was, what information did he have from the Attorney General's investigation? The investigation that been conducted against the town or by Ms. Cook, by which he was asking for recusal. And that's the information we got from the Attorney General's office. There was no investigation. There never has been an investigation. But Mr. Gove, Mr. Gove presented information asking specifically that, that the council would recuse herself. Based upon information that did not exist and never happened. I asked you specifically to provide us information about that. That information, it's never meant forthcoming. And by the way, I just, to use this information quickly, it's not in here either.
Yes, yes. You've got twenty pages of documents. You, you, I think you are, you are acting as an attorney. To Mr. Gove, a complaint starts an investigation. This is all about his complaint, his back and forth with the Attorney General's office. In his mind, that was a start of an investigation. Now, in your mind, you may say, well, that's not a formal investigation by the Attorney General's office.
Those arguments tonight, make them.
What I'm saying is, this is premature. Because we need to do, this body needs to do the investigation to find out if there's any cause. To bring such a claim against him. I think if you look at these documents, you do your investigation, you'll say, there's, there's no matter here to come before the council.
We have written documentation from the Attorney General's office that specifically states. That there is no investigation into me or this town. That, to me, is written proof of, of what we are discussing this evening.
Well, again, their, their concept of investigation is not the same as Mr. Gove's. When he says, I made a complaint, I've been talking with the Attorney General's office, they're doing an investigation. I think that twenty pages of documents show, corroborates that he made a complaint. And he's gone back and forth with them and they're investigating it. Now, whether they call that a formal investigation or not, that's a different matter.
If I could interject, as I stated at the beginning of this meeting, you all had thirty minutes to address our concerns on the board. We're about fifteen minutes through that. Would you like to address the concerns that we're specifically here to discuss here tonight? Or do we want to continue debating whether or not an investigation exists or not?
Well, I think what we're discussing is what issues are we discussing tonight?
We are discussing. Mr. Gove's interactions with and conduct towards fellow appointed board members, staff and consultants, his interactions with staff outside of board meetings. And his apparent disruptive and disrespectful behavior as an appointed volunteer representative, representative, representative of the town. He requested that I recuse myself from addressing those concerns because of an investigation that does not exist. I have addressed that now on numerous occasions. The council has voted in majority. It is okay for me to continue in this process. If you guys would like to continue to use your time to address this issue, go for it. But you only have about fifteen minutes left. Would you like to address your concerns that are specifically stated here in this letter?
We would like to address the concerns that are specifically addressed in the letter.
Okay, please.
Not beyond that.
Okay.
Well, I'll go ahead. Let me just interject. I believe I'll advise the council. I believe that you wish to address the issue about the investigation. You're free to do so based upon the advance notice that Mr. Gove and his attorney had on this issue.
So, thank you for coming.
Hey, I hate to interrupt, but it's been muted on the Zoom meeting for the, everybody in the public audience.
Thank you, Mr.
So am I going to be able to address it? Or you're just going to tell me what I'm going to say?
I don't feel that this issue with, is relevant for our concerns. Continue, and I'll stop you if I feel like it's.
Well, it is relevant in that I was accused of not knowing what I'm talking about.
That, that's not one of the concerns that we've stated here for this evening. That we're talking about, again, the center on your interactions with, with and conduct toward fellow appointed board members. Staff and consultants, your interactions with, with staff outside of board meetings, and your apparent disruptive and disrespectful behavior as an appointed volunteer member. It has nothing to do with your experience. Please address these concerns.
And that's what I'm doing, but you're not going to let me address them.
Manley, that is not one of the concerns that we have listed. Please address the concerns that we have laid out for you.
Well. Let, let me tell you, you say you want me to address those concerns, some of the challenges that I've, I've had in life. And why I was, I was upset, okay? When my wife and I was first married, I don't know if you know, the tragedy produces changes in people. When I was first married, my brother-in-law shot himself and. In a hunting accident. And I can still hear my father-in-law when he found out he was a beautiful boy. And he was with me hunting. And I still can hear him screaming in my ears. And that was years ago. And. After that, my wife kind down with stage three cancer. And we had to deal with that. After that, my sister-in-law was murdered in Buick. And was in a hit-and-run accident. And I, I can still hear my wife screaming in, in the bedroom when she found out that her sister was murdered. And every one of these things is traumatic to a person. And on, after that, we found little Camden U's, which I'm sure you all are aware of. And. Again, it was my wife and myself that found that little boy. And I can, she screamed for like fifteen minutes of the horror of seeing this little baby. That had been murdered by his mother. And again, the emotions that come flooding in. After all that, you know. I came upon a car accident. And there was two ladies in it. And they, I said, I want to get you out. And they says, leave us alone. The, the fire department come. I said, I can't leave you alone. I said, you're going to die. I need you to get, get you out. And it was me and one other man. And, and we was able to get one. I crawled into the car while it was, the flames were shooting around me. I was able to cut one of the seat belts. I eventually had to get out. And as I got out, that woman was screaming as she was being burned to death. And I told that in the investigation, when he was doing all of these things. Are very traumatic. And it changes you, not just once, you know, you, you say, I, I can't. Why, Lord, am I having to go through so many different things when I see this lady burnt and dead? Far as from me, you, you know, it just didn't seem fair. But what I was upset about. Is I did not want somebody to be harassing me. I, after that, with that lady dying in there, I, I don't do confrontation well. And I, I went to see Joe about it. I went to see the town manager. When Hershey and I had our thing. And he, I told him I wanted to pass charges. And.
I'm sorry, Manley, we're saying, again, saying, addressing the concerns that we've addressed. You're not allowed to bring up other employees, county officials, appointees.
No problem.
If you would like to do that, we can go into executive session.
And. So bottom line, I've gone to see all these people and tell them I can't take this confrontation. I'm a senior citizen. A disabled person. When you've got congestive heart failure, you've got, had a open heart surgery. And probably six, eight months ago, I had a heart attack. I cannot. I can't take it. And people don't get it. I've gone to see everybody I know. To tell them. And what I didn't want to have happen, they say, I wanted the chairman. I didn't want the chairman. What I didn't want is someone that was going to.
Sorry, Manley, again, we're focusing on your conduct on the planning board.
So. That is. The other thing is. In, in your files. The investigation files, someone had called me a bigot. And I don't think they know who I am. To call. As far as Jewish people, in the last month or two. I've Franklin Jensen Ministries, we've give a large amount of money for the sake of. Saving Jewish people.
Sorry, Manley. I'd like to hear you address your behavior on the planning board, the concerns that we've addressed in this letter. Please stay on topic and address your conduct on the planning board.
And I, I am.
And you have about five minutes left.
Yeah, well, every, every time I, you've not let me address it. It's impossible. You know, I don't know why it even had me come in here. You won't let me say the real reasons. If, in my real life, if there's a problem. And I'm a construction worker. You look somebody in eye, you tell them. Look, you've done something wrong. And they will either hit you, or they'll tell you off. And then you come back and it's over with. As far as these things that goes on forever. In the real life, it's over with. Now, people. Have said that I. That I threatened somebody. I've never threatened anybody. And they just don't know who I am. I never threatened anybody at that meeting. I, I don't threaten anybody. I'll tell you. At our house, we have what they call heather hot traps. What those are for is to trap animals. And we, we're in the woods. We've got a lot of them. And the reason we have them, because we don't believe in. Doing violence against these, you know, they've done nothing to us. And I don't believe in doing violence against anybody. And I would never threaten anybody. What it comes down to is, is this, it's a miscommunication of my intentions. Somebody thinks that they know me. And because of my roughness, and I somehow. Intended harm to them, when I've never intended harm to anybody. I don't do it. We was going trapping these animals. We trapped this little chipmunk. And my grandson was there. And I told Ben, I'm going to deport this guy. And he said, no, Bama, don't port this. What do you do? He goes running to my wife, his nana. I said, don't let Bama take that chipmunk go away. So we had to renegotiate. I said, okay, I'll bring him down to your house. And he was happy. Then we could not tell him whenever we caught the chipmunks. I don't do violence. I don't do threats. It's just not within me. It's like when. You, you've been married for forty seven years and you miss, you miss your anniversary. And then three days later, you wake up and your wife tells you, oh, it's all right. If you believe it's all right, you've got to get your head examined. You better get down and get some flowers and tell you sorry you, you missed it. And it's women and men. Give different singles and they talk and they think. Think that you understand. The only thing I understand, when someone tells me someone, I understand that. That same person told me they didn't feel comfortable with talking with me. I immediately stopped. I didn't question her why she said that. I just thought. And I've never talked to her since. I've never gone into the serious.
Manley, again, stay on topic, please, addressing your conduct on the planning board. You can't mention other employees.
I'm not mentioning anybody. I was addressing my conduct. And all, all of those things were part of my conduct. Going right straight through it. Someone guessing, because I'm a conservative Christian Republican. All of a sudden, they say that I'm a bigot and I'm a mean person. They don't even know me. I'm not talking with these peoples. I don't want a relationship. All I want to do is do regular communication with people. And they've come up with this. I've given this town eight years. Of all my free time. And I'll tell you again, the chances of this happening is one half and one percent. Twenty-six meetings a year by eight gives you over. Over two hundred meetings. And there's never been a complaint. When I was put on the council, Jack was there. There's only one thing they said. They said that your missionary work cannot interfere with the planning board. If it does, we will not like it. Do you remember that? No. And I, and I've never had one complaint over that. Not one. Any questions to me?
Thank you. This part of the meeting is closed. And the council will now be looking to go into executive session.
And Chair, we'll be moving to executive session in five, six, seven, second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will be going down the hall to go into executive session. And we'll be returning back here to.
It's my understanding, I have a right to go into that executive session and listen.
No, you don't. You're, that's, you have a misunderstanding. Your attorney next to you understands why you're wrong. Attorney next to you will explain to you why you're wrong.
All right.